Father, we come into your presence with praise and with worship. And Father, we lift up those that are in harm's way in the Carolinas and in where the storm is going. And Father, we ask you for strength and fortitude for them and safety for them until it is calmed. And Lord, we lift up this meeting to you. We thank you that your will will be done, your kingdom come, and your will be done. And everything we do, it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every being just as one. Thank you, Ms. Blaylock, and thank the audience for participating in the pledge of allegiance and the prayer. At this time, I'd like to ask for approval of the minutes for July 16 work section.
Mr. Adop.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Approval for the July 16, 2024 regular council meeting minutes?
Mr. Adop.
All in favor, please raise your hand. All right. Mayor, message at this time?
Mayor Reed. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Not used to saying that, but good to see everyone here. Thanks to all the citizens who've come out to our council meeting today. Want to thank all our city council members for the work that you do around the community, some of which we'll highlight today, but obviously not all the work that you do. So we're appreciative and looking forward to National Night Out in our neighborhoods later on this evening. I want to start with a public safety update and just share a few things that are happening with Montgomery Police Department. Our interim chief, Gray Boys, has been working to streamline police operations to better serve our community. He has implemented a unified roll call system and assessing some other initiatives as well. Talking with both he and Director Batiste, there's some very good ideas that they have and some great feedback they've been getting from our officers. But the roll call system is ideally going to streamline responses and enhance efficiency to make sure that our officers and our forces are better coordinated and prepared to respond to incidents swiftly and effectively. Additionally, he's reinstated the early hire system to better bolster our workforce. And what that means is, in the past, if someone had an opportunity, because it kind of takes a little while for them to go through the process, and they had an interest in the police force, we might lose them. So now we're able to find some ways to bring them in. Also looking at doing reinstating the cadet program as well. So we're seeing some great strides with the transition to e-warrants as well. When we think about this, this system will expedite the arrest process, allowing our officers to spend more time patrolling our streets and ensuring our safety. Furthermore, he's working diligently to enhance our agency's NCIC and CJIS communications capabilities. These improvements will facilitate better information sharing and coordination, strengthen our overall crime fighting efforts. These initiatives are part of a comprehensive strategy to enhance police responsiveness and safety measures to our city. So we're committed to ensuring that the police department has the tools and resources needed to keep our community safe, and we applaud the work that they do around our city. Next slide. We also have a new economic development director. For those on the council who have not met, Frank Robinson. He comes with us as the lead in economic and sustainable development for over two decades. Comes with high praise and experience in both the private and public sectors. Studied political science at North Carolina A&amp;T State University and holds an MBA with a focus on economic development from Eastern University and a master of divinity from Westminster Theological Seminary. If that wasn't enough, he has certifications in low-income housing tax credit management and development, fundraising and development, and other faith-based initiatives. As our city grows and economic development continues to grow at a rapid pace, Director Robinson will join our team and help us maximize on our city's untapped potential and keep Montgomery as a leader in all that we're doing economically in Alabama and throughout the South. Director Robinson, I'll ask you to please stand at this time. Well, August is Black Business Month, and every year in August, we recognize the significant contributions of Black-owned businesses and entrepreneurs to our local economy and the community. Last year, the Black Information Network listed Montgomery as one of the best cities in the nation for Black entrepreneurs. Across the U.S., a little less than 3% of businesses are owned by African-Americans. In Montgomery, that number is close to 30%. However, when you look at the number of employed and you look at the revenues brought in, it still is below average when it comes to that 30%. And so we want to continue to look at ways not only to grow the number, but to grow the scale and scope of Black-owned businesses in our city. And so we encourage residents and visitors to show their support by shopping and dining locally at those businesses, spreading positive messages, giving feedback, and letting others know about the great business that you may have right in your own backyard. We also want to draw your attention to a new grant opportunity that opened this weekend. The Montgomery Seed Grant Fund is available to small business owners, including minority-owned businesses. Creating a robust small business ecosystem is an essential component for thriving entrepreneurship. It will also answer the needs of our citizens who are asking for more retail to open up in their neighborhoods. Now, on to the next slide. Sensory Trail Opens. Last week, we celebrated the addition of two new resources to our city. The first was the opening of the Montgomery Lions Club Sensory Trail addition to the Riverfront Greenway. The trail connects Riverfront Park and the Freedom Monument Sculpture Park. This new segment was designed for sight impaired youth with features that allow visitors to experience nature along the river through multiple senses. Two interactive stations blend the sounds of nature with musical instruments and passing trains. Roats to aid walking allow visitors with impaired sight to take in the bright colors and smells from the wildflowers along the trail. Donations from the Lions Club members and money allocated from the city made this trail possible. Again, we want to thank the city council. We want to thank the Montgomery Lions Club and everyone who helped bring this to fruition. It's been talked about for a little bit and really, really is a nice addition to our riverfront. Now, the hub has opened. Some projects have been discussed, but now it is a reality. Montgomery's first consolidated homeless services center, the Hub, is now open and helping people facing homelessness in our city. Every night, more than 800 people in mid-Alabama are affected by homelessness, central Alabama, excuse me, are affected by homelessness, including families with children, victims of domestic violence, veterans, and those suffering from mental illnesses. This center will help restore their hope. Charitable organizations that once worked separately across the city are now consolidated under one roof. The Hub isn't about reducing the visibility of the unhoused. It's about providing a safe, secure community where those in need know where to get help, preventing the temptation to turn to criminality or harassment. It's about ensuring individuals and families have a place to rebuild their lives. I want to thank everyone who made the Hub possible. More than a dozen organizations came together to achieve this. And growing up in this city, for many of us, it shows our residents and organizations heart and commitment to doing truly everything they can for the least of these. Now, it is back to school, and speaking of heart, I know that many parents and teachers are working very hard right now for the beginning of a new school year. I know we are my house. This morning, I enjoyed the time I spent with many of Montgomery's public schools' parents, educators, staff, and students in their rally that they had at Alabama State University. Thursday, we'll wake up to a new school year and new possibilities. The city of Montgomery fully supports our schools, and we look forward to entering into new partnerships and initiatives to best serve our student population. Already, we have entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Parks and Recreation Department to help bring about support for middle school sports in a way not just to invest in athletics, but in a way to invest in the young people with quality mentors, with quality coaches, and quality leaders, both in boys and girls' sports. I want to thank President C.C. Calhoun, our past president Charlie Genright, for making this a priority several years ago. We finally got MPS to the table, and we're having some great discussions. I want to thank Brandon Dean, who's come in full throttle to bring our city and our Parks and Recreation Department back in line with our school system in a way to reach young people with the support, the resources, and everything else that they need to be successful. We really are excited about this, and there will be some other announcements that we'll have on the academic side in the weeks to come that are almost close to being public. But we'll have some other initiatives that we can say from the city of what we're doing with our public schools. So we hope everyone gets the supplies and the rest they need before we kick off this new school year. The rest you need before you get, kick off the new school year? Got to get up a little earlier? Got to get up a little earlier?
I'm not ready either.
Be ready. All right? So we wish the best of luck to all our new and returning students, and we especially want to encourage the class of 25 to push as hard as they can through graduation. Now, to our last slide and the reason for the council meeting taking place at this time. I want to end this message by inviting everyone here in person or watching online to come out tonight for the 30th Annual National Night Out. Many neighborhoods across our city will hold events that promise to be filled with fun, camaraderie, and community spirit. Tonight is a night for all of us to meet our neighbors and the men and women who serve and protect our city. Tonight, let's celebrate our unity and commitment to one another and make sure we're there for safety and the well-being of our neighbor and our friends all across the city. As you enjoy the many activities at your local block parties and cookouts, take time to meet your neighbors, make new friends, and strengthen the bonds that make our community so special. Please also take time tonight to engage with our public safety officers who will be out there, police and fire and others who will be taking part as well. This is a wonderful opportunity to build trust and cooperation, discuss any safety concerns or neighborhood issues, and learn more about crime prevention strategies. Also, please encourage your children to take part in the activities and learn how to take part in their community. We want everyone to have an enjoyable night. And to our Neighborhood Services Director, John Dow, and his staff, we want to thank them for their involvement. To all of our city council members, we want to thank you for your involvement as well. And most importantly, to many of those neighborhood presidents who are doing these things day in, day out, week in, week out, month in, month out. We really appreciate everything that you do. Truly, truly is a selfish way to give back to your neighbors, to your community, your city, and we're grateful. So with that, we want everyone to have an enjoyable night. Be patient trying to get from stop to stop, but we want to make sure we cover as many of our neighborhoods as we can. And for those that we don't see in person, we look forward to seeing you next time. With that, Mr. President, that will conclude my remarks, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any questions for the mayor? All right, any special committees report?
Mr. Calhoun.
Mr. Brew.
We had a Public Safety Committee meeting on the curfew and holding the parents accountable. Had scheduled another one and had to move it, and that meeting will be this Thursday, I think, at 1:00, 1:00, 1:30, something like that.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Yeah, check with Ms. Blaylock, people.
Just get here at 12:30. All right. Ms. Johnson?
For the Commerce and Industry Committee, we will have an ordinance ready for review before the next council meeting on August 20th, and we'll be meeting that morning at 10:00 a.m. to close the gap on that for the fee schedule and definitions for event centers, et cetera. And we brought in zoning today to give their input, and we'll be including PD and FD as well.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Ms. Beard.
The meeting on Thursday is at 1:00.
Say that again?
The meeting on Thursday is at 1:00. I have it in my notebook, Mr. President.
She looked in her notebook. She's got a notebook.
Oh, it's 1:00?
Yes, she's got a notebook.
Thank you, Ms. Beard. That's the teaching you. We appreciate it. All right. Madam Clerk, item one.
Mr. President, item one, mayoral veto of ordinance number 28-2024, pay raises.
All right, council, we have a mayor veto in front of us. The question is, all in favor of upholding the veto?
Somebody has to make the motion.
I'll make the motion. Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor?
Can I raise a couple of points on this just for clarity? I want to be clear about the veto that we have here. You know, when we think about the ordinance, this is probably something that could have been done and probably should have been done through the budgetary process as opposed to ordinance. But, you know, when we look at this, we got to think back to why we wanted to bring this pay raise to the forefront. The pay raise was really brought to the forefront because we were behind in starting salaries for those at the bottom of seniority, and it was done really as a way to try to replenish the ranks of those officers who were choosing other departments to move to or to go to for their profession. You know, this council, well, this is the new council, but the council since I've been here has been great about supporting public safety. This will be the second significant raise, significant raise in the last three years. We went 14 and 1/2% a couple of years ago, and that was across the board. That was everybody, top to bottom. This ideally was a 15% was for those at a level that we feel we are lacking the numbers. And what we want to do is to make our department, all it can be, competitive from a salary and benefits perspective. So it was never meant, I guess, for those at the top of the ore chart, the police chief included. It was not meant for those that are, you know, the most senior level officers. And so I've been a little bit concerned about the conversation of what's been behind the veto. The veto was not for the entire pay raise. The veto was as the ordinance has it drawn up. We still support the 15% and five and five, or 15, five, and five, as we're calling it, for those police officers. It's just for those middle down. And I think that's very, very important for people to understand. I know there's a little heartburn by some at the top of the ore chart about who will make what, but let me say this: As the mayor, the police chief makes more than I do, the fire chief makes more than I do, some of the police officers, who are not the police chief, make more than the mayor does. So I think it's very important to understand that we are in this business for pay. I think if we were all in it for pay, we'd be in the private sector trying to earn everything that we could. We're in it for service. And so the goal for us is not really is the mayor make what the police chief makes, or the fire chief, or the economic development director, or city attorney, or anybody else and what they make. It is, are we there to do the job that we have been called to do? And I just want to be very clear about, you know, how we got to the veto. And I think there are a few things that police chief Gray Boys, you know, have some thoughts on as well, which is why I've mentioned that as one reason. But we also want to make sure that, you know, when we're talking about day-to-day financial decisions, that the finance director is consulted and is in agreement, that the mayor's office has been consulted and is in agreement, and that it is very plain what the impact will be, both positive and negative. So I just wanted to make sure that, you know, there's some clarity given because, again, this is really for to get more people into that pipeline. And that's what we initially talked about in leadership meeting with the council. That's what we talked about when we voted 9-0 for it, and that's what the ideal circumstance still would be, is to get more people in the pipeline for the Montgomery Police Department with the early hires and laterals. That is the goal for us, to make sure that we do that. And we don't want to clog that at the top of the ore chart where this is concerned. And I just think it's very important, Mr. President, for us to understand kind of how we got here, why we initially started the conversation, and what it was really, really for. And again, that is to get those numbers up and to make sure that those And again, that is to get those numbers up and to make sure that those, uh, folks kind of coming in at the, um, beginning entry-level positions, we can compete with other peer cities our size, other law enforcement, uh, organizations, uh, across this state for the same talent pool. It was not necessarily for those at the top of the chart, uh, and that was the feedback that we got both from rank and file. That was the feedback that we got, uh, from others as well. So I just wanted to make sure I, I clarified that, but I'm certainly going to add, answer any questions if you have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Pruitt?
Mr. President, I just had a couple of comments, and I think one of the things that, again, just for clarification.
Hold on. Mr. Pruitt, you hear from Mr. Samas?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Samas.
I didn't know we had to run through the leadership document first. Um, was just that, again, the veto today then takes us back to where we were before the May vote, uh, because this is an amended resolution, and so not only would be, be retracting the 10% increase for majors and captains, we'd actually be repealing the 15% for, uh, the officers and the 5% cost of living for other city employees. Another thing I just want to point out again, and it was pointed out earlier, is just that back in February, when we first sat down as a Public Safety Committee, I'm not on it, but I was sitting in on those meetings, and one of the concerns that we had at the time in addressing this was an across-the-board raise package, one that was centered around 25%, 20%, uh, 25, 20, and 15%. And we understood, and Betty laid out the case very well of why 25% across the board wasn't going to work and why 20% across the board was going to be a stretch, but we thought that 15% across the board was something that we could work in. I know what we budgeted for officers for last year. I think that one of the things we can do during the budgeting process is potentially see if those numbers can, um, be adjusted to what we think we can reasonably accomplish in 2025. So, you know, and I, and for these officers that, when we talked about it back, we were trying to get this done initially. I know it couldn't be better, and I totally understand why, but initially, the idea was to have this done so that by quarter four, at the very least, city employee Montgomery, or city of Montgomery employees and those officers were getting their raises, and we didn't meet that deadline. I understand why, but it's been a while, and, you know, for 18 officers, it looks like, I just have to say, I, I think we can do, do right on those, those positions.
All right.
Mr. Samas, here, let me, let me address that a little bit. So, you know, when you're, when you say the 18 officers, um, we're not talking about raises for 911 operators. So I mean, we're not talking about raises for Montgomery Fire and Rescue. We're not talking about raises for sanitation. So, you know, at some point, you have to draw a line, and I think that everybody, I think that everybody in, in, in those departments as well as many others deserves a raise. So it's important to understand that those that are at a higher level are still getting that 5%, so they aren't without a raise at all.
Totally understand.
Right? So when we consider this, again, the initial goal of the raise, because we have to deal with other departments. So the other departments somewhat kind of understood not being down here advocating because there was a police shortage. Kudos to them. I, I think that for us to make this about 18 individuals, uh, and I'm not going to say it's for all 18, right? So for whoever, uh, those may be, that convolutes the entire point of what we were trying to do, which is it was for those entry-level officers. So when you go and you say it's 18, well then, why shouldn't fire get some? Why shouldn't, why shouldn't 91, why shouldn't 911 operators get?
Well, and I think that actually, you, you bring up a good point. The budgeting process is an opportunity for us to do that, but we have a 5% cost of living adjustment that was inside of this, and the, again, the, the conversation started with us and the former police chief sitting down after they had been told that they were being awarded a raise. So I think the circumstances are a little bit different than the regular budgeting process, which I, I agree. We, I, I think the fire department and other departments should be putting in their case for why we should be giving people raises. I, I do think that given the moment that we were in, the attrition that we were seeing from the police department, the idea of this was to specifically target, um, the police department, and so, and that's why we also added the 5% um, cost of living for everybody else. So we were.
So let me ask this question.
Sure.
When is a 19%, when is a 14 and a half percent two years ago, and a 5% cost of living adjustment, not a, not substantial raise?
No, it's.
Let me say this, teachers in this state have gotten nothing close to this.
I agree.
State employees have gotten nothing close to this.
I agree.
This city has never done that in, in the last 25 years.
I agree.
I talked to the gentleman two chairs down for him and asked him that. So my only question is, you're, you're saying what the police department sold. I'm telling you what we sold to other departments as well, was this was not for everybody top down. This was for to address an acute problem. The acute problem is not at the top. The acute problem is not the police chief, is not the, um, those below them as well. The acute problem is in the, the pipeline. And so what we, part of the reason, again, I want us to be very clear, so because I think we're creating something that we don't really intend to. We told other departments, we have an emergency matter here. The emergency matter is not, you didn't have police chief who wasn't making market value or anyone else at that level that wasn't. The issue was, we are not competitive at the entry-level positions with other departments. So that's what we sold to public safety, and I'm saying the word sold for a reason, because the one thing to tell them is another thing to persuade them. So that's what we told other departments and asked, well, what about us? What about the work we do out here in this heat, 100 degrees, when we're putting asphalt on the streets? So we are, we will be going back on what we told those departments as well, because what we said to them, it's only for these issues that we have here, and that's the shortages of people coming in, and we are behind, and we at the bottom or near the bottom of that scale for starting salary for those officers. So by doing this, we are, we, we, we are misrepresenting what we told other departments when we voted 9-0 for that.
Well, given the number that we have budgeted versus the number that we have enrolled in the police department, from what I've seen, it looks like we can accommodate this. And as I said, going back to February, the intention was to go across the board initially, and that's initially what they were told as well, and I'm the son of a public school teacher, so I definitely understand the fact that our public school teachers are not paid enough as well, and I wish we could do something about that.
I can't handle it. We can't handle it.
Yeah, but I just think that we're at a position right now, given where we're at, and we can look at it through the budgeting process, and if we have departments that have those kinds of retention issues, those gaps in their personnel numbers that need to have other things, or, you know, their personnel compensation packages look at, then we should definitely do that as part of this process. But back in February, we said we were looking at a way to stop the, whatever adjective you want to use about the, the number of officers that we had, and, uh, that's what we was initially looked at, was across the board. That's what the letter that they got from the previous police chief said, and when we, when we were coming into this one, we're talking about 10% for those upper two ranks. At this point, I just think personally, there's value in making sure that we're making them whole like we said we would back in February.
All right, Mr. Pruitt, I take your question. I want to make one statement before we move, and we vote to conscience on this as we go. But my intent, as we said, we voted 9-0 on resolution ordinance 19-2024, and to come back and amend that to make the adjustment, I want the public to know, we was never trying to reject officers from getting a pay increase. We gave a 15, 5, 5 raise that we projected to be in the budget. This came back to rescind everything that we're doing. I don't have an issue with it, but I think as a council, when we vote on something and we agree as a whole on a ordinance to bring some, I think it was not saying on your part, because I know you wouldn't do it intentionally, that it was some trickery in this ordinance that we came before and we voted down on, well, went 5, 4, and now it's up on the mayor's veto. I don't believe in undoing what we did, and so, uh, I'll take your question. I just wanted to make that statement. You can make your motion, Mr. Pruitt.
Yeah, I'm going to make it, and I just want, and then I'm done. No arguing. Mayor, we're still low in salaries for police and fire, and over these past couple months, I have committed and will ask the council to help. We need to look at that public safety, a referendum on the property tax, a public safety tax, and if we really want to talk about paying these people what they're worth, we're going to have to ante up as a city. And I think that's going to be important, that we all get behind it, that we can pay our 911 operators, we can pay the fire department, we can pay the police department, because we're still low. I saw something the other day, the county's coming out with something, and we're going to be behind them still.
All right.
So.
Mr. Pruitt, we take an amendment then, that we still low, then let's do a 15% across the board for all public safety.
You're going to have to vote on the veto and then make a motion.
Well, we hadn't, we hadn't got a motion on the veto yet. We hadn't got a motion. It's just been discussion.
Okay, but you can't, I was going to tell you.
Well, Betty's got to explain to us if we can do it. I mean, you know I'll do 15% across the board for all public safety, but the mayor's looking like he's facing a heart attack.
Me too.
So, I mean, you, I know what you're doing. You're being sarcastic.
No, no, I'm not.
There you are.
I want some friends, too.
Well, we can, we can, we can do that, but again, and I, and I'm fixing to call for it, but mayor, the majors and the captains, we can't penalize them just because they've paid their dues and have done a good job and have become majors and captains.
Hey, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. No, no one is.
I know.
Let me say this, also, I want us to keep this fact in mind now. Again, we got to make sure, you know, it was a few months ago, so a few, few meetings ago, you know, we didn't have merit increases when we were talking about that 20 and 25%. So you got merit increases in here along with, you know, the, the, the cost of living adjustment. So again, I don't want, because here, here's how, here's how it sounds to me, if, maybe I'm joking, citizen, right? It sounds like greed, okay? It sounds like greed. If the goal is to play as a team, if the goal is to be a team, then I don't really keep up with other people's pockets, all right? So I don't really keep up with who's making what, where. My thing is to get the best people in that are going to help this city. It doesn't, it doesn't matter to me, and I think those at the top really have more responsibility, and I think that's probably why you have something set up the way they are in the, in the pay structure. That being said, it, there, no one is being penalized when you have a merit increase and cost of living adjustment at the top level. We're just saying, and what we said from the very beginning, and what we told other departments. Now, I think this is key, because we told Fire Rescue, we told EMA, and we told 911 and everyone else that the reason why they were getting 15% was to address this challenge that we had, getting entry-level officers to come through the door, and we couldn't do it in other places. So I don't want anyone to think that a, a merit increase, cost of living adjustment, uh, is in any way penalizing anybody who's making six figures already. That, that's tough, hey, that's tough in a city where, where the median income is less than, is less than $36,000.
But when this 25% raise came up, Mayor, we were bleeding police officers. And, you know, and that's why the raise eventually, that's why it came to fruition, is, you know, we, we had a major problem and, and still do, quite frankly, but that's how this came about. It was for, it was trying to keep anybody that could come to work.
Yeah, un, until you do the math. I mean, so, I mean, I can, I can throw out, you know, a lot of percentages for anybody, but whether that's budget or not, but we still had, it still has to make sense from a math standpoint, from a budget standpoint, so that's kind of how, how we got back to the 15. But I just think that for us to, not only change what was voted on 9-0 as a challenge, now somebody, somebody's got something to explain due to, because we haven't seen Fire Rescue down here, we haven't seen sanitation down here, we haven't seen any of these other departments who do some hard work like you do every day outside in that sun and all the weather elements down here, and I haven't gotten those calls, y'all haven't gotten those calls, because we told them, this is what it was. They said, we're going to take one for the team? Okay, we'll stand down. When the budget gets right, we'll come back and ask you guys for what we think, but we understand what the challenge is. Everybody took a hit, if you will, on that.
Right.
So I just think it's very important, because we sent a message to other departments that this was for one issue and a certain issue, which is why basically they were being prioritized. Now we're saying those at the top want some more, and so they need to be prioritized. Well, again, that's not what we said to other departments in this city as to why some were getting a 15% and others were just getting a 5%. That's significant, and that needs to be clarified, and I'm not going to be the one explaining, which is why I'm trying to explain it right now, because that's what we told those other departments during the same time, and those that talked to us about, well, where's our raise and why aren't we getting the same, given the work that we do? Because I can tell you something, you want to see crime go up? Let the trash folks walk off the job.
No, I agree.
Okay? So you, let, let the trash folks stop picking up. So, you know, there, there's a lot of importance in what all the departments do in the city, but we, you know, not at all times can we help everybody at the same level at the same time. It's just that simple.
All right. All right, gentlemen, we're trying to get to National Night 2024. So, Mr. Pruitt, I take your motion.
Uh, make a motion to override the mayor's veto.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Five.
All the posers have the same, right?
Four.
All right. Next item?
The mayor's veto is overruled, and they adhere to the ordinance. Item two, hearing on proposed ordinance resoning property containing 8.70 acres more or less located on the west side of Lower Tumka Road across from Stokes Road from an R-50 district to an M3 Q district.
Mr. Brady Hicks?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Brady Hicks?
This is the one we talked about in work session.
All right. Mr. Brady Hicks, I think you want to go ahead and explain to Mr. Grimes.
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion to remove the, the queue from this, uh, from this.
You're going to have to make a motion to adopt and then a motion to amend.
Why you're removing the queue? I, I missed the conversation. What was the discussion?
Because it's been a, this was, it's been a junkyard for years out there, and they put a queue on it, and there's a junkyard beside it, across the street from it, and in case he needs the space, he'd like to remove the queue.
It's too many junkyards. That, it, it, that wasn't a discussion with anybody that was in the district. I, I appreciate you moving for that, but I don't think that I should move any kind of way, because it's already, we're trying to clean up Lower Tumka Road, and it is the key and it's a gateway into downtown, and it is a complete junkyard already. And I get what you're asking for, sir, but I don't think, and I don't, per conversation with my community, I don't think we want to move any further.
So let me ask you a question. What was the queue on it for? Why would we restrict it on the queue? Anyone from planning represent that?
Kippe?
No expansion of an auto salvage junkyard is what the restriction is from this problem.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Blalock.
Yeah, she explained it to us, boy, thank you.
All right, now I see that. All right, what's, 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 Mr. Hicks, go ahead. You want to?
Yes, sir. Well, what we got is, like I said, we've been out there a long time and had a salvage yard, and this is some property that I've actually have used before for salvage yard that I didn't realize was zoned. I never had any problems with it, but far as that and the one across the street that I own or lease out, we're, we're the cleanest yards there are in the, in the surrounding area. We in compliance with ADM, and, um, we put the asphalt millings down, we keep it weed spray controlled, and, um, we just, uh, you know, we got this right beside it. We just need this to be zoned the same thing, because, you know, so I have the same zoning and be able to do, do it, move around the cars like I want it. The picture was still up there for the last nine years, probably 150, 200 cars was on this piece of property. Nobody had, you know, we, no complaints for any neighbors. Everybody comes by us, is very happy with everything. Now, there's a guy beside us that if you come down Lower Road, is a tremendous, uh, mess, but that's not us, and that's not the way we operate our, our business.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, right now, I want to move to, uh, hold this indefinitely, because we are working on a zoning ordinance right now, and I'd like for those updates to go through before we because we are working on a zoning ordinance right now, and I'd like for those updates to go through before we move any further, because, again, Lower Tumka Road is one of those key places that we are looking to update. And so, I, I know you've been, uh, I'd love to come by there actually and see it, um, and see who, the areas that you're leasing out to, um, actually. But in the meantime, right now, I'm gonna hold this for, carry it over indefinitely, until we get through the zoning ordinance.
Table indefinitely.
Yes, ma'am.
Wait, wait a minute. We, we table the whole thing or the queue?
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
Planning approved it, right?
Yes, conclude.
Yes, with the queue.
Yeah, well, all we asked is just to remove the queue. We got it, uh, at the last meeting, I've got it, most of my understanding is zone M three, it just has a queue for restricted salvage yard.
Correct.
We, we've also got eighteen wheelers parked on it now to, in the M three zone.
And that, and that's an issue too, but, again, as we get this update with the zoning ordinance, we'll revisit it. Um, and, and I'll keep you updated on it, but we have a public hearing coming up, uh, for this zoning ordinance, but right now, I don't wanna make any moves on it or make any adjustments.
Alright, Mr. Blaylock, we have a table in motion, so it's item number three, it's been tableed indefinitely. Uh, there's no discussion. And Mr. Graham, the planning commission just makes a recommendation to the council. At the end, we, we still do that. So she made a table in motion, so we're acting on item number three. She's not voting up, sir.
Alright.
Item number three, hearing on proposed ordinance rezoning property containing five point twelve acres more or less, located on the south side of East Fleming Road, one thousand feet east of South Court Street, from an N one and a flood hazard zone to an N one district.
Alright, head of owners of property on East Fleming Road, item number three. Alright, I don't have a problem with it. Make a motion for me, Mr.-
Can I have a public hearing?
Okay, this is the public hearing. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. CNN declared a public hearing, has withheld this property for the council. Your motion?
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
In unanimous, the ordinance is adopted. Item four, ordinance authorizing payments of seventy-five hundred dollars per month for twelve months to the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office for patrolling and law enforcement.
The item's been withdrawn.
Did the maker withdraw it?
No, no, he, wait, he said he withdrew it in a quick.
And he has to do it here, Mr. Chairman.
I did it for him.
Hey, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am, we're gonna withdraw it, and we'll talk about it in our budget process.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item number five, review of Soul Food Kitchen, Selvin's Food, Soul Food Sports Cafe, twelve sixty-six East Dale Mall, and the, uh, finance department has requested this be carried over to resolve some issues.
But it's the owners here from Soul Food Kitchen? They're not here? Oh, alright.
I haven't heard anything from them. What's the doubt? It was out of the council, and they needed, they didn't go either way.
Goodness.
Carrying it over?
Yes, ma'am.
Item number six, review of Key West Inn, ten forty Southwest Boulevard.
Drichelle Patel. Your name for the record, sir? Your name?
Duxis Patel.
Okay. Alright, Ms., uh, no, Ms. Riley?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'm bringing you up before the council, because we've been having issues with your hotel over in that area, and it seems like you're not trying to get it in compliance. Um, several calls, lot of activity is going on in that area at your hotel. Um, a lot of activities in your parking lot going on in your hotel. Um, and you're agreeing with me, so you know you got an issue over there, so what are you trying to do to fix your issue?
See, we always call, uh, emergency service, and we are, uh, and when they come, like, they are all-
I, I, can you speak into the mic? I can't hear you.
We always call nine-one-one, like, emergency service, and, like, they are all homeless people, like, running around the street, and they are staying at the abandoned hotel next door to us, and they always come to the property when they see clients who are checking in, or they always breaking in their, uh, cars, or even in the hotel and all that. Even we are tired of it, and, like, we always call the, uh, emergency service. When they come, they always go back to that hotel and hide in there, and this is going on from a long time. And, like, we always put the trespassing, I go to the magistrate office and all that, and you can check those records also. But there's nothing is, like, they are always come to the property and hang around over there, and they are damaging the property also, and if we're gonna tell them something, they always, you know, threaten us, and when we call the law and, like, uh, police and them, you can, like, they always, like, hide somewhere, or they give them a warning one time, two times, and after that, we have to go put the trespassing on them. They go over there, like, for a month or so. Once they come back, we have to do again, put them, uh, put the trespassing on them, and it's just going on and going on.
Okay, your businesses are sore out in District Four, and there's a problem in District Four, and I'm just gonna be honest with you. And you're telling me, you, you haven't told me what you're doing to fix it yet. You haven't told me anything that you have done to fix it. Because if you're dialing nine-one-one and they're not showing up, what else are you doing? Do you have security there? No, you do not.
We don't have-
I, I know you don't.
No. We always try to, you know, warn them and like that, but they go away, come back.
So what are you gonna do to fix your problem?
What should we, like, because they are, like, always- I can try to fix it, like, I have to hire probably like a security agency or something.
You can try to do what?
I probably have to hire the security agency and see what I can do.
Okay, uh, okay, I wanted to give you thirty days to get it cleaned up, but I need that area cleaned up. You got too many people hanging out around here, I need you to get some security around here. Because other for you to do business over in District Four, and we're trying to revive our area and keep our area flowing and looking decent, 'cause we got work we're doing, and I need everybody to participate in the work we're doing in District Four. So if you wanna be a business in District Four, you gotta do the work in District Four. So, uh, Ms. Blaylock, can I bring him back in thirty days and give him an opportunity to get his, I need some security done, I need the area cleaned up, 'cause I'm over there constantly, and it's dirty around here as well, trash everywhere. And we can't continue to keep blaming other people when it's our business, so we gotta get it in compliance. And I'm willing to work with you. I'm gonna give you my card, you call me, and I'm gonna come visit you, 'cause I, I'm a visitor, I love to visit. So we can get some work done, 'cause we gonna look good over in District Four. We gonna do business in District Four, we gonna look good in District Four.
Excuse me?
We gonna do business in District Four?
Yep.
We gonna look good in District Four.
Alright, sir, you got thirty days, uh, you come back before the council, thirty days.
Carry over the thirty days.
Thirty days.
Item number seven, resolution repeating the legislation which created Montgomery City County Personnel Board and expressing council's intent to adopt an ordinance creating a city personnel board in accordance with Acts twenty-two-four dash three-three-seven.
Okay, Ms. Blaylock, I'm gonna carry this over, and in our public communication, we do have Ms. Carmen Douglas.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, I just wanted to go over a few things with you-
I know everybody knows you, will you give the clerk your name for the record, please?
My name is Carmen Douglas, and I'm the Personnel Director for the Montgomery City County Personnel Board. When, um, you had your work session, there was some discussion about some things that, it seems like there's been some misunderstandings on. So, I know I don't have a lot of time right now, but I'd just like to address them. Um, I do, I agree with, um, Jeremy Reed, Montgomery City County Personnel does not provide full HR services. Our function is similar to the Office of Personnel Management, which provides the personnel services for the federal government, state personnel that provides the services for the state employees of Alabama, Jefferson County Personnel Board, and Mobile County Personnel Boards. We are here to administer a merit system, to provide employment and promotional opportunities based on merit and qualifications. Um, we also provide for pay based on merit. Our systems also allow for due process rights in the case of demotions, suspensions in excess of thirty days or more, and terminations. Those are all functions that are provided to afford for making sure that, um, people are hired, promoted, and paid based upon their qualifications, not based upon any other political affiliations or otherwise. The need for human resource functions is something that I have asked the city to provide for, for years. And I think that it would assist in a lot of the issues that you face. Most people do not leave jobs because of pay. Data will show you that. People do wanna be-
Carmen, will you say that again? Say that one more time, that last-
Most people do not leave jobs because of pay.
Thank you.
However, people do need to feel like they are being paid for the work that they do. One of the functions that we also provide for is that we oversee the pay and classification plan. In the past, our office has been prov- uh, asked to, um, attend the meetings when there's been discussion about public safety pay. We look at other jurisdictions, we look at internal and external equity, and we provide data. We have no control over what the city's pay philosophy is, if they wanna exceed the market, meet the market. We don't have any control over that, but we do have the resources and the, um, relationships where we can get that information from our competitors, and we can decide who do we want our competitors to be. Um, this time, we were not asked to participate in the process. We did assist the sheriff's office in creating their pay plan, and we looked at things outside of just base pay. That is part of the services that we can provide. So we just provide the data, and then those who make the decisions decide when to implement it, what they can afford, and how they can do it. I think that you also need to keep in mind, and it was something that was said, I don't set processes for the city, the county, or the airport. All of that's decided by the jurisdictions. One of the things that Mr. Reed brought up was a telework policy. Um, I made a suggestion years before Mr. Reed ever got here, and that's Jeremy Reed. I gave a suggestion. This is what some other jurisdictions are doing. This is an outline that you can use. Um, this is something if you'd like to implement, you can. Gave them a whole process on how to do that. I do not set processes for the city. They make that decision for themselves. We make broad policies. We do not set poss- processes. Um, there's also some misinformation. We have not had a register for three years, ever. We used to have registers that lasted two years, but we haven't had registers for two years in years. So registers seldomly even last a year. This fiscal year, from October fourth, we have hired over five hundred employees. We provide registers from what people are hired from, but we have nothing to deal with when they interview them, how long it takes them to interview them, but I can't provide you when we provided them with the register and how long it took them to make the decision to hire. So there's misinformation out there about the process. I only have control of the process in my office, and we work very hard to be efficient and to use technology to our advantage. However, we are limited into what we can do if we're not funded for it, and our funding has to be approved by the city and the county. So processes are not as current as they need to be, because the funding has not been provided. We are in a different market. I love the field of human resources and personnel. I take pride in what we do and the protections that we provide in the public sector to employees. It's not all about money and the cost savings that is provided. The purpose of the Personnel Board is to provide for equal employment opportunity and protections to employees who go through a disciplinary process. That is the main purpose of the Personnel Board. The other services that are provided by human resources, which include things such as employee relations, things as training, I can't mandate any of that. We can provide it, give it to them, but the city has to make the decision to determine whether or not they're gonna require their employees to participate in those programs. We used to afford for orientation for new employees, but the city decided that they wanted to take it in-house, so our portion is recorded. It is no longer provided in person, so there are things that are without, outside of my control that are not done. So, I don't want you to misunderstand. The city does have budgeted for a human resource department, and I'm all for them having a human resources department, because it would be better for the employees. But the functions of the Personnel Board are outside of that. It is for the merit system protections of employees and for due process rights. And that is something that should be afforded to all public sector employees.
Okay. Anybody have any question for Ms. Doug?
I, 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 Mr. President, I don't have a, well, I guess it's a question, but it, it also a comment. So as we're looking into, uh, and Mayor, you might can go ahead and answer it, as we're looking into the human resources process, which I know, uh, Mr. Reed passed out to the council members, um, what I'm hearing is your, your processes is basically EEO.
It's similar, yes, but that's not, that's not the main function. The process that we have is more so what I'm gonna say, it's for merit system protections. If you're familiar with how the state of Alabama is set up, if you're familiar with how the federal government is set up, it is the same format, and it actually goes back, I don't know if y'all want a history lesson or not, but it goes back to the beginning with the federal government, because back in the day, the president used to make the appointments. And he actually, the president was assassinated by a disgruntled applicant. And that's what caused the, uh, beginnings of what we call the classified service, to take the politics out of the hiring process. The spoils system is what they called it. So people would be hired based upon merit and not because of affiliations with anyone or any particular group. So it's to protect employees.
So my question is, Mayor, is that a part of the, um, RFQ to have, uh, EEO and/or something similar, a part of this, uh, consultation fee? As we're doing the HR department?
Yes, so that is part of what the, the RFQ is asking, if, I believe, if you go, I don't have it in front of me, but, um, I believe this, can you pass it? Thank you. So if you go and look under Employment Labor Relations, it speaks to that. Existing practices determine the most effective strategies and procedures tailored to effective manage employees' labor relation functions, identify challenges and where improvements can be made. Furthermore, we will work with key stakeholders and facilitate established robust communication channels dedicated to addressing employee grievances and resolve conflicts promptly.
Okay.
And the difference with that system as opposed to the way that our current, current structure is, and the structures of the utter, other entities that I spoke of, is that I do not report to any government agency. I report to a board, so we are an external agency. That would be an internal agency.
Okay.
And that is the difference, and that is the whole point of the structure that we have.
Alright.
Whether it's with the federal government or other jurisdictions.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Doug, thank you, Ms. Reed, we gonna carry this over, we gonna move, and what we'll set a meeting for all parties involved, and we'll discuss this uh, as we move forward on, on, on this resolution of, of, of this ordinance as we move forward for the HR department. Alright.
Item A, ordinance requiring all apartments and real properties in the city to have and maintain a local property manager or local property management company for the oversight and maintenance of properties.
Mr. Sumas?
Yeah, so we talked a lot about this during the work session, trying to look at all opportunities before we pass anything. And so, uh, uh, Ms. Blaylock, I'd like to, tell me if I'm doing this right, set up an ad hoc- Oh, Mr. President, I have to tell this president, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to set up an ad hoc committee to discuss this ordinance. Do I have to give the details? About having local property management for the oversight and maintenance of properties.
What committees you serve, Mr.?
Do I serve?
Yeah.
Transportation and Commerce?
I think he's asking for an ad hoc, rather than a standing-
Which one you chair?
Transportation?
Alright, I'd like to put in a transportation committee?
Doesn't fit transportation, Mr. President.
We'll put it into the Commerce Committee. Or Personnel. Which one? No, you on the, what's it called? Put it in Commerce.
We're not, I mean, we're still open-ended on, uh-
Who's on that?
Andrew's on that, right?
They're, they're still-
We're still, we're still working through licensing, man.
Hey, my, my point, what I'm trying to get away from is using ad hoc committees. Uh, and it might not fit into transportation, but I wanna use the committees that we have set up. That's why I asked you guys in the beginning, what was your interest when we set these committees up? So we gonna start doing ad hoc committees on all these things that we go for. What's the purpose of having council?
Yeah, no, no, I, I hear you, uh, I mean-
I wanna put it in there where you can work with-
I mean, Public Works is going Commerce, I mean- Can I be an ad hoc committee of one, and just meet with some people from the city?
You on Public Safety, Public, Public Works? No, Public Works.
I don't know who's on that. I'm not on it.
Let's just go with Commerce, you on that, and we can work it.
Yeah.
I'm on that one, so we'll work.
You haven't been to a meeting for Commerce in three meetings.
Trying to let the guy leave.
Do I put?
Yeah, Commerce.
Alright, well, so-
So we'll have two concurrent running subjects.
Yeah, one's about to come out on-
See, you're just causing problems now.
Yeah, one's about to come out on the twenty.
Why can't I, how many people do you have to have to have an ad hoc?
As many as you want.
Can I, why can't I just have a small, two, two, three people?
Put it in a committee, sir.
What?
Okay, we do it with, my point I'm trying to make, we can find where it fits. I don't care if you can charity committee or whatever we can do. We put it in ad hoc, we don't need committees. An ad hoc supplement what we do as a, as a committee. That's why we set them up.
That's fine. I mean, look, I, the only reason I was trying to do is to get a couple of the departments together.
And the reason why I put in a committee that you serve on because you bring it before the council.
Yeah, that's fine. Then we'll put it in, I mean, if you want to have it two concurrent, whatever, whatever is in the same committee, then we'll do it.
We do it. That's fine.
It's harder on me than it is on y'all.
Yeah, see, now Brenda, now, now we owe Brenda lunch on Friday.
I got you.
A big one.
A big one, she says.
Okay. This is into, you're putting it into Commerce and Industry Committee for the study of local property management for rental properties and apartments.
That is correct, and I'll, uh...
We'll have to look, we'll have to work on some dates.
It won't be, I mean, it'll be the, the Chairwoman, Councilor Johnson, correct?
Yes, she's the chair of that committee.
She will set that one. CC's going to come to that one, too.
Yes, I'll be there.
He wasn't going to be on my ad hoc, but now he's got to come to the Commerce one.
That's why they want no ad hoc.
I wasn't going to put you on it.
Thank you. Let's move.
Item nine, ordinance authorizing purchase and sale agreement and sale of real estate owned by the City of Montgomery at 900 Rosa L. Parks Avenue.
All right. Just, all right, need a motion?
Is it, um, the public?
Yeah. This is not a public here. Yeah, we just need, make a motion.
All right, motion to approve.
Need to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted. Item 10, ordinance authorizing purchase and sale agreement and sale of real estate owned by the city at 904 Rosa L. Parks Avenue.
Need a motion?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted.
Yeah.
Item 11, ordinance authorizing purchase and sale agreement and purchase of real estate by the City of Montgomery at 64 Monroe Street.
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Ordinance is adopted. Item 12, ordinance granting a license to construct, install, and maintain license plate readers located on City Right of Way at North Pecator Street, at Northwood, Ripley Street westbound, and North Crater Street and House Street northbound.
Okay, item number 12, and our public communication on the general item is Sharon Harris. Sharon Harris?
Oh, oh, that's, that's going to be carried over.
All right, we're going to carry item 12 over.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mitchell?
Why are we talking about Flock? I, I just hate that we don't have other options. Flock is monopolizing this, the, the, the city, my neighborhood associations. They came in three years ago. They started off with $2,000. A year later, they came up to 2250. A year later, they came up to 2,500. A year later, 2,700. Now, we at $3,000 per camera, and I, I don't, I don't have the luxury of having homeowners' association. My neighborhood associations are very small, and I think we had a, a budget of maybe $22,000. I have approximately, maybe 10 cameras in my district, so you're looking at $30,000. That's annually. So, if you do that times 10, you're talking about a lot of money on something that we can never own, and my neighborhood associations cannot afford to, to, to purchase or, or maintain those cameras. And I just think that the, the city and the council as a whole need to, competition is good for everybody.
Yeah.
If you don't have any competition, you, you, you monopolize the system, and that's what they're doing. They're, they're monopolizing the system and not giving us any other option. I think we had one other option, Cat, what was the camera system that we had? Have you been working on getting our own?
Yes, yes, and, and, and I'm still kind of working it when they're pulling the food. Counselor, I don't want to catch y'all.
Yes, sir, and I think when we first came in, we had one other company that we were using. What was it?
ConRix.
Yeah, and I, I don't think they were online or doing the capabilities that we need, so I just asked the council if we can do a little research on, because I know there's somebody, somebody else out there in Flock that's doing...
Mr. Mitchell, you know, this was all created to help the police department. We need the police department to give us, guide us on this because we don't know what we're doing.
Well...
We're not experts, but the police department, for the Department, Police Department, that's where it needs to head up.
Yeah, Mr. President.
And I would like to see that happen.
One at a time, Mr. Genright has to... Go ahead, Mr. Genright.
I'm just saying, we need that, what?
I'm listening, Charlie, you're out there calling me, come here.
We just need to have direction from the police department for what we're doing.
Yes, sir.
And one, and, because we got, I know with one other camera group, but they don't tie in the police department properly. This one with the, with the Flock does tie in, and then, but most of the thing is, is other, but we need direction from them. This is about, it's about protection of citizens and our police department and their job.
All right, Mr. Grant?
All right. Well, one thing, and I don't think, I don't know if it's Patrick or Kippy, that when people are pulling fiber in our city, they're using our right of way. C Spire did it in my neighborhood, did it in County Downs. We should have had them pull a tube of fiber for us as part of their deal. That's not unusual. We got Atlanta Highway happened. When AT&amp;T was pulling fiber down Atlanta Highway, when they're doing it, it's, it's all, it's very minimal cost to have it done at that time. Have them pull a tube in, and as we get there, oh, then we can buy cameras for, not, not tag readers, for about $5,000 bucks with a five-year warranty. So, then we can do something. Tag readers are about $7,000, and then you can bounce signals from one camera to the next camera. So, we, we have some options, but we need to take charge. When they're pulling fiber, they need to be pulling City Montgomery some fiber.
Yeah. And, and Mr. President, uh...
Hello, 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 Mr. Johnson, you want to answer that question for Mr. Grant?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, as Mr. Grimes is familiar with, AT&amp;T, they actually came to us for a new agreement. These entities, they enter into agreements with the city, and, and when they are renewing these agreements or, or first, I guess, entering into an agreement to put something on our right of way, that's the time we have to negotiate these deals. But once they've negotiated and they're in place for, seems like it's, I forget the length of time, but maybe up to 20 years, I think, these license agreements. And so, once that's negotiated and in place, they then have the, you know, the authority to place their infrastructure on our right of way. But in the case of the AT&amp;T, that particular one, we made them pay a fee of $3 per linear foot, plus we made them run an extra conduit and turn up at every signalized intersection from Burbank all the way to, I believe it's Union Street downtown. And so, but we got to catch them at the time they're requesting that permission and entering to that first agreement.
Well, Patrick, let me ask you a question. Who catch, who will it come to, who does that come to, where, is it your department, Robert's department, Kippy's department, who's department it's come to?
Usually the engineering department gets first stab at that, so, you know, as those agreements come up for renewal, if, if, as long as we kind of are involved in the process, then we, we can help with that. We'll work with our traffic folks. We can work, you know, try to work out, you know, both the financial piece and/or getting, you know, maybe it's cameras or fiber, whatever may be installed.
Well, there, there's one other thing, Charlie, I mean, Mr. President, CC, that we, Louder's going to probably come to us in the next few weeks, a neighborhood they're going to do on Atlanta Highway. Well, I've met with Louder and asked him, will they pull fiber when they put a camera for us? We don't have fiber there right now, but when we get there, we'll be able to flip the switch and put cameras in the neighborhood if we need to. All the new neighborhoods, we need to have them pulling fiber for us. We missed the boat on the one out there with D.R. Horton in Atlanta Highway and the one on Vaughn, but we could get ahead of that. I mean, they shouldn't, their new neighborhoods, it's easy. It's a, I mean, it's a feel. When they're laying it in, it's no, they're not boring anything, they're just laying it. It's easy stuff.
Yeah, usually what we're looking at when they're installing new traffic signals, usually with our traffic engineering department, they will look to try to get what we call interconnect cable, which is a fiber optic. They'll try to go to the next, wherever that next signalized intersection is, and try to make those signals connected so they can be coordinated together from a timing standpoint. And, and, and that's the time we also, when they're putting that new traffic signal, they can add the cameras, TTC cameras and all during that process.
Well, Patrick, can you kind of look out for us when it comes to you, say, hey, they're putting something down, whatever, Colson, I, I don't know, I'm just pulling one out of hair, Fairview, that we can kind of get our, our tube in at that time?
Yes, yes, we definitely will.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Ms. Johnson?
What about Federal Drive, Patrick?
Ms., 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 Ms. Johnson?
No, no further comment.
All right, Ms. Beers?
Patrick, what about when they're doing Federal Drive? Is there going to be any way to pull fiber down Federal Drive? Is it already there when we're going to do that project, just like Perry Hill Road?
Many times, what, obviously laying fiber is expensive, and so, and many times to keep costs down, we'll use radio signals, and, and we will communicate with traffic signals and cameras through radio signals. Fiber is the preferred, but in many times, we've kind of got some budget constraints we work with. It's not that it can't be added at a later date, but that's, that's usually the preferred method because it's a lot more expensive to run the fiber.
Well, it just looks like C Spire continues to go to different little neighborhoods of the city.
They're kind of the last mile, uh, folks.
Yes, but can we not rego, can we go back to the table at all and possibly entertain that? Have not done, I mean, that, to me, that sounds like...
Yeah, usually they're given kind of blanket permission in these agreements that run for a period of time to use our right of way, and we have to negotiate those things on the front end.
All right, thank you. Thank you, guys. Ms. Blalock?
Item 13, resolution authorizing agreement with Aldot for the widening and resurfacing of Perry Hill Road from Harrison Road to Atlanta Highway.
All right.
Move to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. 14, resolution setting hours of operation for 2600 North Belt Drive, Montgomery International Dragway.
Ms. Beers?
Mr. President, we're going to carry this over. We're working on moving some operating hours and also a few other things that need to be taken care of. So, we'll carry it over for two weeks.
Let me ask, but what's, what's the operating hours now, you know?
Um, right now, the operating hours are Saturday and Sunday from 9:30 to 11:30, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, it's from 9:30 to 10:00 a.m., and Friday to 10:00 a.m. We are, we have talked together, and we're flip-flopping the Sunday time to the Friday time, making Friday and Saturday open to 11:30 instead of it being on Sunday and, excuse me, Saturday and Monday. So, that's what we're working with.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
And then opening on Thursday evening till 10:30 because of some activities and races that he's doing on Thursday night.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. That's the item number 13. 14 is being carried over for two weeks.
Item 15, resolution authorizing feasibility study of Loveless School.
Move to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Move to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted. Item 16, application for towing company doing business as D&amp;D Towing and Recovery, 562 Oliver Road.
Move to suspend rules.
All right, all right.
Is, is Mr., Mr. President?
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on. It's, uh, Le Anthony Rose in the audience for application for towing company. Thank you, Ms. Beers, you want to carry this one over?
Yes, I do, because I, I want to try to find his business. I, I don't see a 562.
All right, she going to carry it up and over.
And Ms. Blalock, I would like for him to come down, too, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item 17, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as Texaco Food Mart, 758 Air Base Boulevard.
All right, owners for, yes, sir. Shahir Shahia? I know I tried to convert that name.
Yes, you have.
Okay. You got that, Ms. Blalock?
Yes, sir.
All right, this is a public here. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I declare the public here has been held as proper for the council. Mr. Grimes?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Ms. Riley?
Um, good evening. We've already talked, you know, I'm expecting you to get some security over there because of that location of that area.
Yeah, only thing, the neighborhood on the Gibbs Village, the young kids, they're coming in on the school out, so the story's like 12 o'clock, we're going to reduce the hour and, you know...
What time you going to close?
Huh?
What you say you going to close? I can't hear you.
No, the, um, the young kids, they're, they're coming and the disturbance...
It's not, excuse me, it's not just young kids out there. I mean, I live over in that area, and I see the activity, all the cars in the parking lot with the loud music, all the, either people sitting out there drinking, I see the activity.
Okay, so then I have the security.
So, I'm going to ask you before I transfer your license over to Grant, this, you're going to have to get us some security out there. We're going to protect that community out there. We don't do anything else because that's in District 4, and we're going to protect them.
Yes, sir.
So, I need security. I need abundant security company working over there, providing security for that area.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay? I have no problem with it.
All right, so you got, what's the motion?
Uh, I...
Motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, sir.
I declare the public here has been held as proper for the council. Need a motion?
Motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
All right, good luck with your business, sir.
Item 18, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as Lyons Pride at 111 Perry Hill Road.
All right.
Good afternoon.
Your name for the record, sir?
Don Patel.
All right, thank you, Mr. Patel. This is a public here. Anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. Seeing none is proper for the council.
Motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand. Did I close the public here?
No.
I declared a public here has been closed.
Unanimous.
All right.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous. Resolution is adopted.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your business, sir.
19, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as Lyons Pride at 111 Perry Hill Road.
All right. Megan?
My name is Megan Nainani.
Speaking to the microphone, ma'am.
Megan Nainani.
Pull it down.
Is that better?
Yes, sir.
My name is Megan Nainani.
Okay, you got that, Ms. Blalock?[1627.66] Okay, you got that, Ms. Blaylock, yes, sir.
Uh, as we said in the work session, um, it has been brought to our attention that we do not have a current license under the name of Wahiguru, and we do not have a copy of the current permit, so we request that this be carried over to the next meeting until paperwork's in order.
All right, all right, Ms. Megan, did you hear what he's, he's requesting, what he's talking about?
Yes, sir, we do have a current food permit under Wahiguru, I can provide it, um, we also have an inspection for the certificate of occupancy, and we have to have that before we can proceed with the business license application, and that inspection will be completed in the morning.
Okay, we'll get with our license division, they're gonna carry this over, and you'll be back for the council in two weeks.
Well, I don't wanna hope, you already opened, correct?
Yes, sir.
Can, can we approve this pending that license?
I hold the paperwork until, until, um, business, what is this, the inspection department has signed off on all codes.
Okay, let's do that.
So you're making a motion to approve it pending they get their stuff done with the license department by Friday?
I see, the council has already instructed me, I hold the resolution until they comply with all, I get signed, signed off.
Okay, we're good.
From all the inspections department.
Okay.
All right.
Motion to suspend rules? Did I do the public hearing? Yeah.
Okay.
You didn't ask for opposition, Mr. President.
Yeah, all the posers had the same, we, I got the opposition.
With the revenue.
No, I mean the public.
Okay, anybody wanna oppose this item, please come forward, public hearing has been held as proper for the council.
Yes, sir.
We got the motion to suspend rules?
Yes, sir.
All right, any motion?
Motion to suspend rules.
We got that, motion to adopt.
No, we need the vote on suspension of rules.
All right, one at a time.
Who voted to suspend, are y'all voting to suspend the rules? Mrs. Johnson, are you abstaining?
We got a motion to suspend rules.
Unanimous.
All right.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Are y'all getting tired on it? No, 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 no.
'Cause I was trying to understand what he was doing, and I was explaining it, and so, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Good luck with your business, ma'am, and make sure you get the paperwork to the revenue office, and she'll hold that to the time, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Item twenty, application for retail beer and retail table wine off premises only, doing business as Macklemore Food Mart at twenty-one-eleven Macklemore Road.
All right, owners of, item number twenty.
Hello, good, good evening, everybody.
What's your name, sir?
Shabab.
You got that, Ms. Blaylock? All right, thank you, we got it. All right, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. CNN, I declare the public hearing has been held as proper for the council, Mr. Grimes.
Motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
All right, good luck with your business, sir.
No, we got another one right behind it, don't we?
Okay, all right.
Item twenty-one, application for lounge retail liquor class-two package license, doing business as Macklemore Spirits, twenty-one fifteen Macklemore Drive.
All right, your name for the record again, sir?
Shabab.
All right, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. CNN, I declare the public hearing has been held as proper for the council.
Motion to suspend rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
Good luck with your business.
Good luck, sir, thank you.
Item twenty-two, application for special retail more than thirty days with a license, doing business as twenty-eleven The Ultimate Play Zone at thirty-five forty-one McGee Road.
All right, uh, Mr. Melina and Jake Jackson? State your name for the-
Jake Jackson.
Melinda Jackson.
Okay. All right, before I-
Are they the owners?
Yes. You guys are the owners, right?
Yes.
This is the old skating rink?
Yes.
All right. Okay, for the, um, all right, this is a public hearing, anyone like to speak against this item, please come forward. CNN, I declare the public hearing has been held as proper for the council. Okay, for the, what, what are you planning on doing for this, uh, temporary license, what, what's your plan?
We're planning to not be a bar, we're planning to do this for, um, private events, private events, and, um, people that not, I'm not interested in just giving out liquor. We're just doing this 'cause we're getting cut out anyway, so we would like to have, um, to be able to control alcohol coming in our building, and be, and be able to say, no, you can't have alcohol. And we just had our building hit by a drunk driver that had, that we didn't have anything going on, and that was the reason why. We are finding that people are coming into our building, and security have been, um, co- now we're searching purses and, and searching everything to keep alcohol out of our building. We would like to be able to roll out a cart and roll in a cart. We're not interested for those that have parties that are roller skating, we're interested in those who rent out our building for events. We're not looking for events that are dealing with children or anything like that, so that is why we are trying to do this. We wanna have a package for those who want to have, we have birthday parties, sixty-fifth parties, things like that, and we would like to be able to offer. Know what I'm looking for? Just hold it. I look different, but I'm still Melina. All right, so if you have any questions, I mean, that's, that's pretty much what it's for, we have plenty of bars around us, so we're not trying to be a bar, we're trying to just offer, uh, spirits.
Okay, Ms. Jackson, this is what I'm, I'm trying to understand, you're asking for a liquor license for more than thirty days, so why are you just, why you won't just apply for a, a, a liquor license?
This is a liquor, it's a year-long, it's a year-long.
'Cause thirty days is, that's just the way they, they read it, they have it for-
This is for a full year, and, and they can renew it just like the other business license can.
I don't know why they put for more than thirty days.
Hold on, hold on, say they give Ms. Blaylock?
This app, the, this type of license is for a full year, and it's renewable at the end of the year without coming back to the council, just like the other liquor licenses are. It's different from the special events less than thirty days.
Mr. President, if I can add, um, this is one of the conversations we're having right now in the Commerce Committee when we talk about the licensing and what they're actually licensed to do, because what we found, and what revenue has pointed out, is that every location wants to do events, but they're not licensed as an event center. They're licensed for either a restaurant or a lounge, so we need to get that clear, I'd ask that we carry this until we got that clear, and then writing on August twentieth, Mr. President.
Ah, ma'am, uh, Ms. Johnson. We are not, we are a family entertainment center, we do birthday parties, I'm not talking about events just that don't go along with what we're doing right now. We do birthday parties, we do anniversary parties, class reunions, as what we are right now.
So I'm clear on what you're saying, but what I'm telling you, what I'm saying, in the Commerce Committee, we have this in a committee, and we're right now going back through what licensing should look like, and what it will look like per, uh, week, per our completion of this ordinance, so that's what I'm saying. I got what you're saying, but what we're doing is specifying permitted usage for whatever license that you have, so that's, that's right now is beyond your purview, and this is something that's being discussed, and, and you can come to the meeting, it's on August twentieth, but that's what we're discussing right now, so that's why I'm saying it.
But-
And this, this has everything to do with-
I understand, I understand what you're saying, but the, the bowling alley hat sells it, Skyzone sells it.
Skyzone.
Yes, everybody has one, I don't understand why we wouldn't be able to, and we're not trying to be a bar.
This, 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 let me just say what I'm, what I'm at, and I don't have a problem with the thirty-day license, but what we're at, you, you're, it's The Ultimate Play Zone, which is a skating rink, so basically what, go ahead, but let me, your skating rink, so you're asking for a, a event license, thirty day or more, which is a year, so-
No.
My position would be, if you're gonna be a skating rink that wants to sell alcohol, ask for a full liquor license.
That's what we asking for. That's just the way they word it, that's not our wording.
They got the special retail, so they're asking, but what I'm saying is, what, like, for instance, what she's applying for, there should be a, there's gonna be another fee attached to that, and she gotta get another business license.
Okay, but that's when we pass that, so let me go ahead and just let her go right now. Mr. President?
Mr. President.
Ms. Mitch, uh, motion to suspend the rules, all in favor, please raise your hand.
I was gonna ask a question.
Unanimous.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Beard, you got a question?
Yeah, are, y'all are in operation right now, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, we've been in operation for five years.
For five years. Do you have security at your-
Yes, we do.
Okay, I'm just looking at the, um, incident record right now, um-
For us? Yes, no.
Did you get your answer, Ms. Beard?
Make sure it's, uh, McCullough Valley LLC, twenty-two-eleven The Ultimate Play Zone, we replaced loonies, we, we bought loonies.
Okay, but you've been in business for five years, right?
Yes, ma'am.
She's gonna be having an event, she's gonna need to make application for an event center.
All right, Ms. Mitch, I'm, I'm okay with it, so if I were asked that, the council would vote, vote your conscience, but I'm okay with it. Motion to adopt, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Four. Everybody else vote no, or abstaining?
I'm, I'm, I'm abstaining.
I'm abstaining also.
Three and four abstaining, Mrs. Mrs. Beard, you abstaining?
Yes, I am, yes, ma'am.
So four and three? Seven people?
Yes, sir, it, it fails for lack of majority.
But the majority is seven.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
So four is the majority?
You're correct.
Thank you, I won one against Ms. Blaylock, go, C.C. Thank you, good luck with your business.
Thank you so much.
Item twenty-three, resolution declaring, authorizing, and assessing cost of improvement of public nuisances on various lines.
All right, any motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
No, no, I'm asking, I can't do it.
I think it, motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, resolution is adopted.
All right, anything else from the council?
Um, yes. You good, Ms. Blaylock?
No, I got one more before I go to you, Ms. Blaylock, you gave me something at the beginning of the meeting on an amendment that we need to make.
It's an ordinance, amending ordinance number twenty-nine dash twenty-two forty, removing restrictions and covenants on the property owned by Whitfield Foods Incorporated. The time, the attorney is here, but the paperwork that was adopted last time has some errors in it, this is just correcting, and attached to the back, you'll find a red line, uh, copy that shows you, uh, what has been corrected in this from what you adopted at the previous meeting.
Okay.
The attorney can address it better.
Yes, sir, your name for the record, sir?
Blake Peel, representing Whitfield Foods, sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, the draft that was attached previously was the draft, not the final draft, and so, the amendment that you have actually attaches the final execution version of the agreement.
Okay, anyone have any questions?
No.
So we just need to adopt this resolution, okay, any motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous, ordinance is adopted.
All right, thank you, sir.
I do have some contingencies for the council. For District Two, Mr. Mayor, all of these have been checked, and they're all vendors for District Three, um, one thousand dollars to MPS Percy Julian for flag football, two thousand to Quiet Storm, two thousand to Distinguished Young Women, seven hundred to Dial Right to Community Association, one thousand to Montgomery Area Coalition for the homeless, and for District Seven, one thousand dollars for Lightning Line.
Anyone else? All right, need a motion?
Much to approve.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
Unanimous.
All right, that's all from the clerk, yes?
Yes, sir, that's all I have.
All right, and our public communication, none agenda items, just for another week.